Welcome, everybody, to the November 21st City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. Thanks for being here. We will get started. I will start with a review of the minutes. Is there a motion for the minutes?
Move for approval.
October?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, if you're want to speak, if you want to speak to the commission for items that are not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and we'll hear your thoughts. All right. I see none, then we'll move on to announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vernon Girth, our ACA has a number of announcements, or at least one, as I know of, that he would like to share with you and maybe have a little discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. At the workshop, we talked a little bit of staff trying to become more efficient in carrying out the requirements of our municipal code and zoning ordinance and the other master plans that we have. And one of the things that we've identified is that to communicate better, not only with the planning commissioners and perhaps the aldermen, but also with the community, is to create an all-inclusive development services website on our webpage, the city's webpage, in which we can put a library of our master plans, of our zoning ordinance, of our municipal code, of all the various types of permit applications and checklist. But also something that affects yourselves is that we want to, once we develop the site, is we want your input. We'd like to put all the development applications that are submitted on that site, but also the administrative approvals. Now currently, you obtain the administrative approvals, and as you've noticed, it requires staff to draft a report, and then we make copies of that and distribute it. And what I'm proposing is that we do that one time and put it on a website. We have to create that yet, and we would have to change the administrative manual to just allow that to be posted on the website, but it would be accessible, not only to yourselves, but the entire community. What's come in, and then what has been approved administratively. And that would save us a little time of formally writing the reports, making copies, and getting them out to you, and it would be available there all the time, and as they are approved, too. Because one of the other things that we are looking at is, do we necessarily have to have a process for administrative type approvals that coincide with your meetings? Can they occur any time between meetings? And right now, they really occur almost simultaneously with this meeting, just a few days before we make those final decisions. So we would like to have your input on how that might work, or if this is a good idea.
Okay. Anybody want to comment?
I have.
Go ahead.
Actually, a comment that I was going to make, anyway. There was a real problem, because the administrative agenda, even though it says, if you have any questions about this, you need to make them known by certain, by, like, November the 7th, we did not have our agenda, we did not have the information ourselves at that time. And even on the best of weeks, it comes, you know, you have to pick up the day that the agenda comes out to get to look at that. I have a concern, in a way, about some things that are going on, just on the administrative agenda, that we actually don't see. I know some of us try to look ahead on the, you know, the next month stuff and everything, but it really only has the plans themselves. It has nothing about the staff comments on it. And so, you know, I thought the idea, whenever we were going to have the staff doing so much more administratively, was that there would be an opportunity, the way there used to be on the release of bonds, you know, because the only bonds we see now are the landscaping bonds. But it used to be that those would come up, and we would have an opportunity, and people would have public notice when they were coming up. Now, as far as I know, you know, if you've got a problem with the drainage in your subdivision, you never know when the staff approves administratively something that has to do with anything other than landscaping.
And that, those are very good points, and that's why we want to closely examine putting it in real time on the Internet, so residents, as well as yourselves, can see it. Because really, it's tied to this paper agenda that you obtain at, once a month, and then we come to the meeting. And if we can utilize that technology to allow our residents to be aware of when bonds are coming due, of administrative approvals, of even applications when they first come in, that you can see those instead of waiting for this list. And that's what we want to explore. We're not asking for a commitment. We just want to explore the idea. If not, we can still...
Well, let me say, they need to be listed, though, somewhere, other than stuck somewhere. I do like the idea of the website that has all the services put together, so, because even I sometimes have to look forever to find where a particular thing is. I mean, not the zoning ordinance, maybe, but some of the other, the major thoroughfare plan was a great example of it, trying to find that, you know, where it was. I found it faster on my old email than I found it there. But, you know, there are so many things now that are being just administratively approved by the staff. It really needs to have some public notice on that, so keep that in mind whenever you're looking at it. But for us, truly, if we wanted to make a comment on it, you would not have it until you got your, you've got your materials there, because the preview stuff just tells you the names of the things. It has nothing about any comments from the staff.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I like the idea of, you know, doing it in real time and having it online and not necessarily having a listing that's printed out and given to us. But my suggestion would be, is when we get our monthly email that has our agenda and some information, if maybe there was a link included, and a reminder saying, here's a link to all the administrative reviews that were approved since the last meeting. And then that reminds me, oh, yeah, I need to look at those, because I'm not going to think about during the month, oh, let's see what's been approved this week. So I could click on the link, and you may, you know, maybe can pull them all, and that, they might be, because I don't know how long they would stay on there, so if there's just a whole big list, I'm not sure what's been approved since the last meeting and not, so maybe just the ones from the last 30 days could be put in a file, and that link would go to that file, so I could see just the ones in the last 30 days.
Well, we have a team of, from various departments, working together, and we anticipate this takes several months, and we'll want to share it with you, as well as the community, the board of mayor and aldermen, of really what it looks like, because it is hard to explain to somebody. Well, if you go to our website and drop down on the planning department, you can get to the zoning ordinance, but then you have to go back to the engineering department to get to the major thoroughfare plan, and over here to get to the municipal, over to the stormwater ordinances. And it's really bringing everything together, and a lot of communities have done that, so it's more user-friendly, and we would want your input. As we continue to build it, we'll roll something out, and then we'll evolve it from there.
I like what you said about putting them on there at the very beginning, as they come in, because as Ann said, and as I've noticed, when we get this packet, they're already approved. So you're telling us that these are the ones that have been approved, but if we have questions or anything, it's already done, it's a done deal. So if you put it up front ahead of time, then the public has an opportunity, as well as the commissioners and anybody.
And did we not, once upon a time, have the, you know, our packet on the Internet? I think I remember, it may have been for a brief time, but that, and you know, you can look online, but there was a short time where all of this was scanned and available to, for the public to look at online, as well as for us. I don't know when that was.
The agenda has links to the staff recommendations and to the staff reports. Now, the whole plan is not in there, because that's, that takes up a lot of computer space, but there is a link on each one item to that, to the staff.
To the comments, right, to the comments. But I remember whenever they would have the plaque, you know, on there. I don't know what we had to scan them then.
Okay. Yeah, and Metro, obviously, Metro has a program called Kiva, and the public can look at any application, the developer or his engineer can look at an application, actually see what the status, he can see comments that the staff makes during reviews, and so that's a readily accessible means, without having to call somebody and try to track down the status of a project. And we're in the process of transitioning from Kiva to City Works, which is another program that we use to track maintenance-related activities, but it'll also be converted now to handle all the project review, the maintenance of, all the documents are scanned and part of that record, and it's a pretty comprehensive system of documenting information related to each individual project, and then allowing the public to look.
Great. So give feedback.
Thank you very much. We'll keep you updated.
Good. All right. Thank you, guys.
Oh, I should also say, too, I did, on behalf of staff, did want to wish you a happy Thanksgiving. We definitely appreciate all the work you do and the time you spend, and your input to various issues as we try to move this community forward and make it even better than it is today, so happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Same, too.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're at the point in the agenda where if you have a non-agenda item, something that hasn't been put on our agenda tonight, we'll consider that this evening, if you do come forward. I see no movement, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two agendas, consent, initial consent and secondary. We'll start with the initial consent. These are items that are considered non-controversial, that will vote all as one block, and those items, as of right now, are 7 through 12, 16 through 18. Anyone on staff, audience, or commission want to pull an item off the consent, initial consent? All right, I see none, then we'll vote on those items again, 7 through 12, 16 through 18.
Move for approval.
Move to second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I will turn the floor over to Roger to deal with the secondary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items tonight for secondary consent, items 13, 14, and 15. Does anyone from the staff, the commission, or the audience want to pull any of those three items? Hearing none, we'll proceed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you, Roger. All right, that misses to item number 19. My agenda, the item would be readdressing street numbers along Watson View Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, until 2010, had a policy that every address was just two addresses, say, on the even side of the street away. And we have recently received a request to subdivide a property that has been approved by this board. However, there are not enough addresses in the range of addresses to allow for it to be subdivided and appropriately addressed. So staff is asking and requesting that, following our addressing manual, that we be permitted to address those other properties along Watson Lane to the addresses that are shown in your package. And this does follow our addressing manual. We have had a public meeting with the neighbors and the people involved in this particular situation, and we are asking that we follow our addressing manual in this case. The reason for following the addressing manual is that that is what the emergency services department goes by when they have to respond to an emergency in a neighborhood. Addresses aren't there, we have to create a new address, all of the other addresses have to change.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the commission on this item? All right, I see none. Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Just, were they okay with this? Because I was thinking, if you change your address, this town kind of...
We had a lively discussion at the neighborhood meeting, and they understand that this has to happen. I don't say that they're thrilled about it, but they understand, they understand that the city will take care of a lot of it in terms of notifying the post office and some other places, but they're going to need to take care of some of it in notifying their credit cards and all of that. And we do give them a window of time. Generally, they're given six months to a year to make those changes.
That's one of the things that I wanted to, because I'd had an address changed, not for this reason, but it's also make sure, and they probably haven't thought about it, mortgage companies and deeds and all that, because if you ever come up later on and try to do something, it's a nightmare.
Yeah, and that's why we give them that time to make sure that all of that is in place.
And the publisher's clearinghouse, don't forget to tell them.
That's right.
In case they're looking for you with their balloons. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 20, ordinance 2013-47, to be entitled, ordinance to amend section 4.1 of the Franklin Zoning Ordinance, which regulates the parking and storage of major recreational vehicles or equipment.
This proposed ordinance change is in response to an alderman's request to ask for a vote, up or down, whether or not the city should regulate storage or parking of major recreational vehicles. The, you know, this topic is fairly simple. Right now, our ordinance says that you cannot park in our major recreational equipment in the front or side yards anywhere. In some districts, agricultural, estate residential, R1, R2, and civic and institutional, you may park in the rear yard. And this vote would just allow that up or down vote to occur at the alderman meeting.
Okay. And in this case, we're just recommending to the BOMA. Is that correct? Okay. I guess, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? All right, if you'll come forward, tell us your name, where you live.
My name is Martin LaHiles. I live at 121 Venter Drive in Franklin, and I was the individual that brought this request to the board of mayor and aldermen. What brought this about, I was notified on the last day of February of 2012 that the camper we had parked in our driveway was in violation of codes and had to be moved. We had the camper put in storage two hours later. We just complied with it, because I want to do what's right. And I had noticed that if you lived in R1 or R2, you were allowed to have a camper if you had it back in your, in your back part of your residence there. So I was requesting maybe that they could change this to where you could do the same thing in R1. It says that, that the intent of this subsection is to prohibit the customary or continual parking of certain vehicles and equipment on public streets and within yards adjacent to public streets and residential neighborhoods since the presence of such vehicle runs contrary to the intended residential character of such neighborhoods. I didn't know what the difference was, the character of an R1, R2, or R3. I didn't understand why it's different.
It's mainly a lot size.
Is, okay, but I was never, I didn't know.
The lot, yeah.
It is a lot size. So what is the residential characteristic? I was just looking for a definition of that, too.
Sure. Well, if you'll finish your speaking, then we'll have the staff address that.
I didn't know if the commission would consider allowing the same thing in R1, to where if you had it in the back part of your property, it was adjacent. The camper sat there for six years before we were even notified about it being in violation, and nothing was ever said, there was no complaints. We also had a boat in our fenced backyard. When I was told I couldn't have that, well, we sold the boat. I couldn't put them both in storage. So that's, we just want some type of, really, on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? All right. Is there a motion?
Can we talk about it?
Well, I need a motion first, and then we'll discuss it.
Motion to turn down.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Second, move to the second. Okay. Now discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the broader, a lot broader picture here, because we have a lot of properties in the urban growth boundary, and does it apply to the urban growth boundary? And we're, you know, I see a lot of RVs and motorhomes, you know, on three, four, five acres out in the, that's in a city, that may be considered a side yard, front yard, rear yard. How's that, is that going to be an equally enforced violation if it's in the front yard on a three or four acre tract? So I think a little more thought needs to go into it, possibly.
Chris, I don't know if you want to address the question that was posed by Mr. Martin, Mr. LaHiles, the question of the character that is described in the definition of residential character.
I would say, in this case, it probably alludes to having these very big vehicles in the front and side yards where they're highly visible, would distract from the architecture, distract from the look of the neighborhoods, distract from overall quality of life issues that communities like Franklin try to promote. You know, that would be the simple answer to our question.
Can I ask a question right now?
Yes.
What if they were in the rear yards and not visible?
In those, they are allowed in the rear yard, like I said, in agricultural, estate residential, R1, R2, and civic and institutional.
Right, but some of the lots in some of the older subdivisions that are not R2, that are R3 right now, have large lots in the backyard, and a lot of people have worked hard, and they may have a travel vehicle, RV, that they want to travel after they retire or something, and then if they can't put it in their rear yard, they have to pay money to rent it to somebody, and we're actually choosing which people we're allowing to have the vehicles in their yard. Because, because my lot is bigger, that allows me to put the RV in my backyard if I'm in R1 and R2, and then if I'm in R3, I can't do it. So I think we really need to think about that, and we need to decide. I mean, I'm not in favor of having it in the front, but having it in the rear where it's not really visible, I would be in favor of changing the order, to the wordage, to add the rear yard to it, but not denying the text amendment request.
I guess Commissioner McMoore is reading my mind, same thing. There are, I won't repeat what she said, but I feel strongly with that. I know you don't want it on the side of the road or in your, in the driveway, whatever, although his has been there for six years, but if he can be put behind the house and not visible, and by the way, some of these older neighborhoods, mine included, the lots we live on are a lot larger than some of these that we're proving. So I just think that in order, I guess reasonable, to be reasonable, along with being regulators, that, you know, if they could park it behind there, I think it should be allowed in R3 also. I don't see this, I don't see where in the world we're accomplishing much of anything other than putting additional costs on, and someone's worked hard to have an RV.
Right.
All right. Any other discussion?
I would like to say that I also agree with that, that if, again, you know, we don't want them out front, or, you know, just right up on the side, up by the road, but if the lot is large enough to have it, a big RV parked behind the house, then I think that's absolutely fine.
And Commissioner, the lot, the lot would be a, we have to look at all R3 as the same, so we have to assume that those lots are three to the acre. And because they're going to vary drastically in size, I mean, some of them will be as big as an R2 lot, because they've been grandfathered in, others will be very small, just meeting that third of an acre. So there's, we have to assume that that's what we're talking about, is a third of an acre.
But if you look at the percentages of people that are going to have them, everybody in a subdivision, and especially the new subdivisions, they'll have homeowner associations that will regulate this, but in the older ones, there's not going to be an RV in everybody's backyard. So I think we're getting a little bit too harsh on something that's not really a big, big issue.
All right. Ms. Pierce?
I'd just say, I think the concern is, especially if it's not just in the front yard, but in the side yard, too, because a lot of times, the driveway, you know, is right next to, let's say, 10 feet or more with somebody else's house. And I think, I suppose, although I don't really remember, I think that is the reason that they were thinking that in the bigger lots, there would be enough room so that they wouldn't be immediately next to someone else's house there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So if we turn it down, they can bring it back rewritten, possibly, right?
If we deny, as I understand it, they can still and may still go to BOMA.
It does.
Yes, that's true.
So it's, this is just our recommendation to BOMA.
The way it's written.
How we feel about it, and it won't really affect the process.
But if we don't let BOMA know, what, because, okay, so maybe we agreed to deny them parking on the street or on the side, my recommendation would be that we, we amend.
That's what I...
I would like to amend what's being proposed, to say rear yard, because otherwise, we just say, to BOMA, we turned it down. I'd like to at least have it for a vote, and we may not get out of here tonight, but I'd like to actually, rather than deny what was offered, offer an amendment, to vote up or down, to send that, that's, I think that would be more informational, in my opinion.
And so your amendment would be, offering?
My amendment, ooh, and let's go to the wording, you guys can help me with the nice wording, but my amendment would be to prohibit, that the prohibition would only be on the side yard, the driveway side and front, not the rear, rear of the house, so.
For any size lot? Or is it?
For R3, we're talking R3, yeah, for R3, for the district itself.
So you're adding R3 to the R1, R2, and agricultural?
Yes.
But really, the stipulation that it must be in the back of the house?
In the, yes, that is the stipulation.
Yeah, and it says on page two, at the very bottom, it's saying side and rear, so we just need to add the zoning.
At R3, because that is, you're right. We just have to add.
That's a proper motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment?
So we're amending, but we're not denying, are we denying the...
We're amending the motion. Now, I'm assuming legally, what's the, if the original motion is to deny, and we approve this amendment, do I need to...
We can go back and change the motion.
I agree, because your initial motion, the motion in second that's on the table is to deny the, to recommend denial of the ordinance.
Well, I'll rescind my second.
You rescind your second from the main motion?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a little bit hard to understand, but if we're going to amend it, my motion, then there ought to be an appeal process for the grandfathered properties that have, that may be an R3, that may be an acre in size, and that circumstances may, would be reasonable, allow them to have it on the side yard. I agree that the front yard shouldn't be in the, out in front of the front door of the house, but if it's on the side, or if it's on the rear, ought to be allowed, especially if the lot is a lot larger than what's currently...
I think we're saying the same thing.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, Alan. What I want to do administratively here is, your motion has no second now, so I need a second for your denial motion, or I need you to change your motion, if you would like to change it.
Okay.
Because I can't amend a denial motion, apparently.
Sure, sure. I would withdraw that.
Okay, you're withdrawing the motion, okay. Now, we need a motion to have discussion.
Okay. I move...
You go ahead.
I move that we amend the proposal, well, actually, okay. I move, I move, yes, I move actually that we would, instead of deny, that we would approve this, this item, okay, which would, which is to include R3. That's it. That's it.
No, you need to be, it doesn't need to be specific about the backyard?
Backyard, yes, yes.
Yes. Your motion needs to say exactly what it is. And your motion needs to say exactly what it is that you're moving to do.
Yes, 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 that we approve, approve this item. However, it would allow parking of the heavy recreational vehicle, the rear only in R3. No side, no driveway, no side, the rear.
I second that motion.
Move to second, any discussion?
Can I just comment? Really, there are a lot of other pieces to this, you know, where they've marked out things and things like that. It might need to be, go back and be revised.
One at a time.
You know, as I say, you're really, it's not just really adding R3 to it.
If I could offer, this, this particular ordinance, it just basically says that Franklin's not going to regulate major recreational vehicle storage. Since Alderman McLennan wanted a vote on that, it may be something that, you know, you pass forward to allow that vote. But then we bring you an amendment that does allow, you know, what you're talking about, the language where rear yard parking of an RV is permissible in any zoning district.
Well, I would ask, is there any formal way, though, for us to communicate? I mean, because I'd like for there to be some information. Because when I was sitting on the Board of Mayor and Ald, I didn't always attend these meetings. And I look around, I don't see anybody, unless Alderman Peterson's going to do that. I just like, you know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because it sends a totally different message to say, okay, they denied, or they denied, but they had further discussion, and this is kind of what the discussion was.
Well, that was my point.
So we need to have reasons to deny.
But we, no, her motion was to approve. We've got a motion on the floor right now.
Okay.
Her motion is to approve.
But, but may I say, the request was from the Alderman was this. And it changes, it doesn't just add R3 to it. And I think he was asking for, I mean, I cannot speak for him, that's for sure. But he was looking for an up or down vote about whether we would regulate it at all.
Right.
Which is what is in here, so.
Yeah, and I think the issue is, how do we communicate that we don't agree with the, there's a middle ground here somewhere?
It's not this extreme or that one, yeah.
So, legal, how do we, how can we communicate that other than them all reading the minutes or?
I mean, the commission does speak through its minutes. So with that said, I'm sure staff will convey the planning commission's concerns. And of course.
I got it. Why don't we defer it?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd really defer that.
Do we, we can't defer, can we?
Then they can't get mad at us.
I mean, I think it's going to process through regardless of our up-down deferral vote. Is that not correct?
Well, if it's, if it's deferred from this body, then it won't go anywhere until this body makes a decision one way or another.
Makes a recommendation.
Recommendation, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Mike, so we're sort of being a spin.
So you're saying we can amend it?
Well, the problem, the problem is.
Hold on one second, please, one person time, go ahead, Scott.
All right, I want to ask the city attorney, we're not allowed to amend this before us. We have to vote yes or no, exactly how it is?
That's not the case. You can recommend to amend the ordinance. And, and not to speak for Alderman Peterson, but I believe what she was saying was, it's more complex than just saying, we just want to add R3. So I think that's the point that she was trying to make, is the ordinance as presented before you simply talks about heavy trucks and trailers or make a major recreational equipment as a whole, and doesn't, doesn't specify for which zoning district. So again, without speaking for her, I think, and I apologize, I hate to put words into, into her mouth. But I think what she was saying was, it may be more complex than just trying to make an amendment right here by just saying, we want it to be only R3, or we don't want it only to be R3, so.
But I guess by our, by the amendment, we are, we are voicing what we feel about this recommendation. I mean, I'm just saying, we don't have to agree with, with what is presented before us. We do have the opportunity to offer our recommendation. So I don't think it just has to be a yes or no to what Alderman McLennan wanted us to do, so.
What if our motion gives some direction to staff to bring back to us an amended?
Okay, good thought. This vote up or down, I mean, vote recommend or not recommend this one. But then, yes, that's, that's.
Instead of deferring, because deferral will sort of be a spin.
I think that's.
That would be a proper motion.
So I withdraw my motion. I guess the second has to go first, or I can withdraw my motion?
You second it?
I think I did.
Yeah, I think you did, yes, you did. I did, I did.
You want to withdraw your second?
I will, I'm withdrawing my second.
Start over.
Okay, basically, we, I would like to move that, we ask staff to please, you know, you've heard the conversation, we'd like for you to come back with, to us with another proposal that involves and incorporates what we've said about the R3 zoning and rear parking of the recreational vehicles.
Put the side parking in there, too.
Side parking based on the lots, a minimum of one acre, is that what you said? Well, please, give us what you think, okay? Give us some, some information based on what we've, what we've discussed today. Because what we have on the floor really is kind of tough.
Well, I think, we know that we have the answers. We just need to know how to simulate.
How to get it, how to put it in words. That's the problem. Because as Alderman Peterson said, as written, this is much bigger than what we were.
Is that a proper motion?
I think for a minute's sake, it may be a little bit confusing. So for the, for the record.
Mike, you.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? I think we need to vote on this, because it is on our agenda. And then, if there's a second idea, make that.
To bring new business to the table with?
That's right. But I think, I think we're required, because this is on the agenda, too.
Back to them.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, I think that's an appropriate way. And there's different ways to skin the cat, so.
But we, we've had folks standing before us before, and we've not voted. We've sent it to staff and asked for something else. So I don't see this being any different than any other ordinance or anything else that's come before us.
It seems like in that case, staff has said, we realize there's enough division here. We're just going to withdraw it and come back with another.
I don't think you're getting a vote.
Yeah, and that was the intent of the previous meeting at the joint session, was to kind of get everybody's ideas, do we, what form does this vote need to take? And, you know, we had that discussion there. So what I will do is bring it back with language that talks about allowing rear parking in the R3 district.
Okay, we just took a little longer to gel our ideas.
Absolutely.
All right, so that's been withdrawn.
Okay.
So is there any new business or any other business that we need to attend to? All right, seeing none, is there a motion for defer, deferral? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move for adjournment.
Second, he said so moved.
Move to second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.